Okay, I'd like to call this meeting over please. And if everyone will join us in the pledge of allegiance, we'll get started.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Let's begin by approving the minutes of the January the 14th, 2020 special meeting and the January 21st, 2020 regular meeting. Have a motion, please. Mrs. Smith made the motion, and Mr. Baker seconded that motion. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we're down to the public comments section. Mr. Ray, would you bring me up there? Let me just make just a couple of remarks here, just for general information. I know many of you aren't, don't come to board meetings on a regular basis. You may not be familiar with the way things work as far as procedurally. But what the, if you'll, those of you who may have gotten an agenda which are available here, at the, in our agenda, which is on all of our board meeting agendas, it kind of gives you an old, it, there's a statement, "This is a meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the county school system's business. There's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Public Comments." And that's the section we're on now, is the public comments, okay? Now, so that means, in order to be on the board agenda, you must advise the superintendent's office at least by Wednesday preceding a Tuesday meeting. The open meeting law requires that the Board of Education put out its agendas three workdays prior to the meeting. So for us, that would be Thursday, Friday, and Monday, because the day of the meeting doesn't count. So in order for the public to be aware of what we're going to do, that has to be up for the public to know. So if you wanted to know what we were going to be doing at a given time, that gives you advanced notice, or something on there that you might have an interest in, then you go to the board meeting and see what it was. That's the, the open meetings law. But at the same time, there is a provision that allows people to come in and sign in, as some have done today, and speak to the board. Now, the only, the biggest difference there is, we can't converse with you. We can listen to you, and we do listen to you. You know, if there's something that we feel that we need to be discussed further, we may do that privately, maybe even with the superintendent, but we certainly will listen to what you have to say. But we can't talk back and forth with you. In other words, you can't ask us a question, we can't answer you, you understand? But now, if you were on our agenda, then we could do those kind of things. So everyone signed in today, we're going to listen to you, see what you have to say. But just understand once again that we can't talk back and forth, okay? That's the law. Now, if you should choose in the future that you wanted to be on the agenda and talk to us, just contact the superintendent's office by Wednesday, because we, that's when we put our agendas together, and then they go out on Thursday, okay? All right, so we're now in the public comments section. The first person that wants to address the board is Cecil Silva. And Mr. Silva wants to talk about bullying inside schools. Mr. Silva.
Thank you, board. I am here as candidate for House Duckett, 22nd District, representing each person here today. It was brought to my attention after I had signed the paperwork to file that a lot of bullying is happening within your school systems. I don't know if you know anything about what all is happening, what you do or don't. I know you can't discuss that with me at this time, but it's something we can talk about further. But I am going to read off some of the things that was brought to my attention, and I would like for each and every one of you to listen, if you would, please. Thank you. This is from a parent. My daughter is in the 3rd grade at Duval. The second week in school, her arm, wrist was broken by an 8th grader. And supposedly, the 8th grader came here from Canola County Schools. She was expelled and not allowed within the school system because of violent behavior. I don't know if y'all knew that, but it might be something y'all can check into and see about that situation. I have all different types of things here. There's some even with a student that went, that went to Guyan Valley Middle School. The child was gay. He was bullied by staff, is what this here says, that it was by staff members. And he is now being homeschooled because, where he was a homosexual. That shouldn't happen in any school, anywhere. Everybody should be welcome. All children should be felt safe at school, not going to school and feeling like, "I'm unsafe." This should be the safest haven that they have is our school systems. And I know where a lot of these come from. During my time, and I did not go to Lincoln County Schools, I went to Boone County. I was at Scott. I was bullied from the time I was in grade school all the way through. I quit high school because of where I was bullied. Do I have a high school problem? No, because of that. But that makes me to where I can stand up for these kids and for these families and stuff and be a voice, because I know where they're coming from, I was there myself. And I would love to sit down with you guys and try to come up with some type of a solution for our children, and let's try and get the bullying out of Lincoln County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Okay, next, we have Roger Justice, and he also wants to speak about bullying in schools. Mr. Justice.
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak on my behalf of my grandchildren, okay? They go to, one of them goes to Harts Grade School, and the other one goes to the high school down here. All right, the one that goes to high school down here, she's already been told that because she's from Harts Creek, they don't want her down here. Whether that's not right, they put the schools together for a reason, because they didn't want three schools, or four schools, and they put them all together. And now, they're telling the kids from Harts Creek, "Y'all need to go to Chappensville, because we don't really want Harts Creek kids down here." And that's not right, okay? So my grandson goes to Harts Creek. And he's been bullied, he's been bullied every day. And I'm thanking God that my son-in-law does not come to one of these meetings, because he would lose his school. And I'm, and I, and I'll do everything in my power to keep him away from these schools, because if he comes, he will lose his school. And, but, like I said, you know, it, something's got to be done, not just Duval, Hamlin, West Hamlin, it goes on in all of our schools. It's went on for years. We need to do something. You know, if we have to take it as high as we can go with it, we need to do something. If something's got to be done. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Justice. Okay, next, we have Crystal Mitchell, who is bullying in schools.
Oh, boy. My son was the son, the boy in the blue, that got punched in the face. This has been going on with my son, his 4th grade, with this particular child. And I have went to the schools, I've went to the schools, I've asked for a teacher to be placed at these restrooms, because it always happens in their rooms. And I've asked for a teacher to be by the door. They don't have to go in, just stand by the door, so the kids still have their privacy. But stand by the door to hear what goes on. My son plainly, in this video, went to the restroom. This kid and all of his little clique, whatever it may be, stood there and watched my son as he put his hands up to defend himself, get hit in the face. He said he got immediately sick and just about passed out. He said he saw black. This kid, it started apparently earlier that morning. The kid was trying to, how do they say, slapbox. And in that video, the principal showed me when I went back to the school on Friday to pick my son up once again, because he was complaining with a severe headache. I took him to the doctor. And from there, she continued what she needed to do. But in that video, when the school showed me that, that she found on the kid's phone, once again, he was just putting his hands up to block his face, like this, telling him no. And this kid has, he gets him in chokeholds. Last year, in Midway, my boys, I have twin boys at Midway. One is this tall, and my son is about six in the video that you, that is out. Today, my little son, he begged me not to go to school, because he's scared of the children that got their phones taken away, because he says, "Mom, it's been said that they're going to do stuff to us." You know? And he's, he begged, he said, "Why draw attention to this, Mom? He said, "It's going to make it worse on us." I said, "Casey," I said, "it's going to go from you to the other children." I said, "Once they stop bullying you, it's just going to go on to others." I said, "If we can get it all stopped somehow." But my thing is, put someone at these bathrooms, because it's mainly where it happens, is in these restrooms. And I have asked for this at Midway. And this year, I didn't think I had to, because this has been going on all year. And my son never said a word about it until this video came out. And when the video, actually, when it happened, my son went to the school nurse and said he fell in the steps. We asked why, once I found out Thursday evening at 9:00 that there was a video. So I asked him why. He said, "Mom, I'm afraid. I'm scared." Not only does he do me this way, but there's several other students in the school that this particular boy does this stuff too. I don't know, it's just not this one kid going around bullying, there's others. But why should my children fear? And Marion Patton, the principal, when I went back to pick my son up Friday to take him to the doctor, she asked me, she said, "What was going around the school that if they caught him in the bathroom, they were going to do this to him?" I said, "Why should my son fear going to the restroom? Why should he fear that? Am I wrong? Yeah, I mean, I know you can answer me, but, you know, why should my son fear going to the restroom?" You know, she said, "He shouldn't have went in there if he heard that they were going to do stuff to him." Really? Is that what a principal should say? I wish you could pull her, the video, if she has one in her office, and see, and hear her say that to me. And then, later that evening, I took my son to the doctor. He proceeds to tell me that in 8th period, she had my son pulled back from class in the office with the bully that did this to him. And her, Marion Patton, and Ms. Brown, was sitting there, getting on to my son, asking him all these questions, while the bully sat at the other end of the table mouthing, "Shut the F up." And the principal was yelling, practically yelling at my son, and he said, "Mom." I said, "So if I ask for video to be pulled of this, this is what I'm going to see?" He said, "Yes, Mom, yes." He said, "And that she's asking me all these questions, and when I'm trying to tell her that he's saying what he's saying to me, she was telling me to shut up, don't interrupt." So really should, I mean, why did she put my son back in that situation in the same room with that child again? I mean, I just, I want it to stop. My children shouldn't fear going to school at all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next, we have Shannon Cypher, who's going to talk about bullying in schools. Shannon, or Miss Cypher, sorry.
I'm emotional. I'm very emotional. I was made fun of in school every day. There was three boys that held my daughter down and kicked her in her back and cut her finger. I have pictures, I have proof. This happened on a Friday. She was scared to tell me. She told her grandmother, and she's not here today. And I went to the principal, I called the principal, actually, on Monday, and I had a meeting with the principal. And the teacher wasn't there the day that happened, and in the classroom, and he wasn't there that day. So I had a meeting with the principal on Monday. The next day, on Tuesday, I had a meeting with the teacher and the principal. And the one boy, the two boys that held my daughter down and kicked her, only got one day. And then the other one, that cut her finger, only got two. So two days she missed. And then the day she went back to school, she had to face these kids. And she was so scared to go to school, so scared. I want something done. Ms. Patton shouldn't be a principal. She shouldn't be. She's only there to get the scene. And I want something done. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Catherine Bronfield, bullying is bullying, bullying is support in schools.
Yes. But I'm just here for support. My great kids is, you know the world too. And I just, I just feel that, you know, something needs to be done. It's awful. When a child is scared to go to school, and then they get, get town absent. And they're scared to go to school, so, you know, and, and the system has guessed them there. It seems like there's just, the kids, I feel sorry for the kids, I really do. And I got a grandson, he's 11 years old, and he's been bullied. And his mom was not here today, she had to work. But he had been mistreated by a bully. I can tell you the boy's name, but I won't. And it was just that one bully. And I just want justice for the kids. I want help for the kids. It's awful that you see your grandkids, children going through this. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Brenda, I really can't, is it Bias?
Yes.
Okay, Brenda Bias, Ms. Bias.
First off, I'd like to say, I would like to pray for this meeting when I go home this evening, that everything goes well. I don't agree with the bullying. The kid shows all their fightings on, on at the fights at school. They sit back, they laugh, I think it's funny, because the kids are getting bullied. They tape it, and like she says, it's in the bathrooms. I think something really ought to be done about the bathroom problems and, and all the bullying that's at the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bias. Okay, next, Elizabeth Roberts.
Yes, my son has been bullied. This has been going on, it's the same little boy. Last year, him and, and his cousin had my son in the hall in a chokehold. Well, my son came home and scared to death, telling me about it. So I called the school, she pulled the tapes. She said, "Yes, I see this, I'll take care of it." Well, so I called Ms. Patton back, asked what was done. She said, "I talked to the boys." Okay, this year, the same little boy, and every year, they put this little boy in my son's class, every year. This year, my son, he's one of these that holds everything in. Well, he got off the bus one day, and he, he just busted out. And I said, "What's the matter, honey?" He said, "This little boy, he said, has been calling me names, mommy." He said, "And he hides my lunchbox." Because I noticed, I pack his lunch, he's a picky eater. I pack his lunch every day. And I noticed, he was coming home, nothing was taken out of his lunch. And he said, "I can't find my lunchbox." And he said, "And when I come back in the class," he said, "It was in my chair." And he said that they all laughed about it. And he's been calling my little boy Fatty. And my little boy, he is a little overweight, but there's no reason for name-calling. Well, so I called the principal to set up a meeting to talk to her about this little boy. And they told me he came to the school the next day. Well, as I'm getting ready to walk out the door, the school nurse calls. She said, "I need you to come get your son, he's had an accident." I said, "What kind of accident?" "Well, he's hurt his finger." That's all that was said to me. So I get to the school, and I ask my son, I said, "What, what happened?" "This same little boy smashed his finger in the desk in class." And, and this was the very next day. And laughed about it. And Ms. Patton said it was an accident. She wouldn't see me that day, she said she was busy. So later on that evening, she calls on the phone. She said, "I can just talk to you over the phone." She said, "I'll tell you what," she said, "Have your son come into school in the morning, and I'll get a statement from him." So I told him, I said, "When you get up in the morning," I said, "you go check into your teacher, and you go see Ms. Patton." He said, "He came home from school." I said, "Did you talk to Ms. Patton?" "No, the teacher wouldn't let me." I said, so I called back to the school. I said, "Well, we'll get to it. It's still not been done." And something has to be done with this bully. He's not only bullied there at the school, but on the bus off school. In kindergarten, he got off the bus, he had a bruise the size of a baseball. And it was from a high school student, because the grade school and the high school ride together. That's ridiculous. They need to put that, the grade school up front, the high school in the back. Thank you.
Now, next is Sabrina Collins. There she is.
My problem is with Lincoln County High School. We go through all the proper channels of my daughter being bullied at school. Going through the counselor, the principal, I call the principal myself, and I'm done calls. And if a child takes it up for themselves after being bullied for so long, they get in more trouble than what the one that's doing the bullying does. I think there needs to be harsher punishment for the ones that's doing the bullying. And she's been told, "Jump out of a window, do a world of failure, just kill herself." She's gained weight over the years, she used to be a cheerleader, she's not no more. And since she's gained weight, she gets made, I know for being overweight, and this, that, and the other. And I'm sure, as everybody in this room feels as parents, we feel helpless, because there's nothing we can do, and there's nothing that the schools are doing about it. So I'm just asking you all to take into consideration to make the bullying, you know, a harsher punishment for these people. Maybe they'll quit doing it as much. And when she was going to Duval, I know what these parents here are talking about, I've dealt with Ms. Patton too. And when I finally told my child to defend themselves, first time ever being in trouble, she got suspended 10 full days. I called Mr. Minkett, and we had a conversation about it. And it was taken care of, I mean, if you're a member of which. But anyways, I'll thank Ms. Patton for taking, taking care of her. I think all my school, my kids don't go to school that anymore. But just, something needs to be done about the bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bethany Allen.
This has been going on since the 2nd grade. I've been bullied by this one certain person, and we went to everyone we know about it, and it won't stop. And then, for the past couple of years now, my biological mother does not have rights for reasons I don't want to speak about. But I get made fun of by staff and kids about that. They'll go onto her Facebook page, and they'll say, "Well, she don't want you anymore, she's happier without you." And I have a 504 meeting, well, a 504 plan about the bathroom. And every single time, it used to be last year, we would take the end of the year tests, and I would not be allowed to go use the bathroom, and then I'd even end up having accidents. And it's just, it's been going on for a while now, and it needs to stop.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Okay, that's everyone that signed in to speak today. Like I said, we thank you all for your comments. We certainly heard what you said, and I know Mr. Minkett and Mr. Kane were taking notes vigorously as we went through this, but...
Yeah, I signed my name in at this time, I didn't realize there was a sign in.
Okay, well, if you will, tell me your name, or what is your name? Come on up to the podium, please. And what is your name, please?
Tammy Lacy.
Tammy Lacy?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about the same thing?
I do, but mine is on the opposite side. I have a little boy that's been diagnosed with disruptive conduct disorder, that we did adopt through foster care, and at times, he is, he can get overboard. And I understand other parents too, because it does take a lot for Nick to get ticked off a lot. And sometimes, there's a lot of aggravation that goes on, because, as my son, my husband says, "Don't be somebody else's puppet, because they can pull out his strings in a heartbeat, and then he's way overboard." So that does happen, but in my experience, Ms. Patton and Ms. Brown have really worked with us, and also the special needs director. Now, some people don't agree with that, but my son Nick hasn't been in various different school districts before, and their first solution was to kick him out. And we tried all the programs around, more than once. But I do have a suggestion that you guys might look into, which Canola County does have, and which we did utilize when we were using Canola, Canola Schools, is why don't you set up an alternative school, where the kids that are having problems, where they can attend, that way, something like the Damon Center, but I think it's called the Last Chance Program in Canola County, that Nick did utilize. And it is successful for some kids. It wasn't for Nick, unfortunately. He was like only five, six years old. But I think it's something that you guys should explore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, like I said, that's everyone that signed in to speak.
Yeah, I also speak, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a sign in. I'm sorry, I just had dinner.
They were going to pass, go ahead, here, okay?
I'm sorry, I can't speak very loud, I just had dinner, dental work. My son goes to Guyan Valley.
Okay, of course, you're going to have to tell me who you are.
Karen Davis.
Karen Davis, okay. And you're going to talk about the same topic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My son goes to Guyan Valley.
Okay, Guyan Valley, okay. All right, go ahead.
We, we have been having trouble for all year. He has been spit on, within a week, he was spit on. He was made fun of, threatened to be killed. We went to school, they kept saying it was under investigation, nothing was ever done. We would keep him home a couple of days, standing by, afraid that he would get in trouble for not being there, until he had to be homeschooled, because it was just one thing after the other, until nothing was done. He's missing out on sports, he's missing out on everything, because he can't go to school. It worries him, he gets so sick that he could not even go to school. He begs, "Oh, please, please, don't make me go." And he was the one that was threatened, if he done anything, back to him, instead of running away, that he would be suspended from school. And I don't think it's right. I think they need to look in and do something with bullying. It's time to not punish the ones that are being bullied. I mean, when you have a 13-year-old that's scared to go to school, something definitely needs to be done. And that's just, I think that's all I have to say, they need to do something.
All right. Thank you very much. Once again, thanks everyone for your comments today. As I said before, we can't discuss all these things individually, but it's certainly something we're aware of, what your concerns are, and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or if you don't want to, you can exactly briefly. Okay, Mr. Minkett, we've been having a presentation review, and a birthday. Let's go to the administrative section. Do I have a motion to lift those items? Mrs. Curry made that motion. Mr. Baker, sorry, Mr. Baker made a second of that motion. Mr. Minkett.
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus shack runners, athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, out-of-state travel for the following personnel. Item C, a contract with Trina Barrett to provide training and instructor for a new central office executive secretary, effective January 29, 2020, not to exceed 20 days, according to the terms of the contract. And item D, an out-of-state trip for Lincoln County High School seniors to Sandusky, Ohio, May 18, 2020, transported by private coach, with all expenses paid by group.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about those administrative items? Okay, is that an all yes vote on those? Yes. All right, let's go down to the finance section, please. Do I have a motion? Mr. Baker? Smith? Mr. Ellis?
Schedule of invoices totaling $619,861.68, listing as a text. Do you have any questions?
Do you have a helper today, Bray?
Well, he's never been in a board meeting before, and I thought I would educate him.
What, you brought him to a good?
I did.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the invoices? We've seen those here for the past several days, everybody. Somebody had the opportunity to look at those. If anybody has any questions about any of them? Okay, if not, is that an all yes on all the financial invoices? All yes? All yes vote on those. Okay, let's go down to the personnel section, please. Have a motion.
Somebody.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Second.
Mr. Curry. Mr. Kane.
Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of professional personnel. Item C, leave of absence. Item D, retirements and resignations. And also, we need to abolish the extracurricular service personnel posting, the CTE bus operator, uh, for the pre-K program.
Okay. Do I have any questions about any of those things? When is our next vacancy posting going out?
Our next vacancy posting will go out tomorrow morning, sir.
Okay, that's what I asked you the other day. We got some big, we got, somebody asked me that.
We'll get that posting out tomorrow morning and, and, uh, it will be rather lengthy.
And well, I don't know if that's a good one.
There are several openings, as you can see, and...
Yeah. I don't guess we've filled many of the, well, we haven't had the opportunity to look at it.
Actually, item B, we did get a math teacher.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, we got, we, we have a math teacher hired at one of our students. From two to one.
So that in itself is a, an accomplishment.
And we do have some folks finishing their alternative certs. Uh, that's coming to that time of year when that closes out so that we could hopefully plug some folks in and if they apply, again, we post and they have to apply.
See, Mr. Roy back there, he's probably going to give us some bus driver line.
There's a rumor.
I heard that. Okay. All right. If there's no further questions then about the personnel, is that an all yes vote on those? Yes. Mr. Kane.
Yes, additionally, sir, you had asked me at the last meeting to, to, to remind you of our work session.
Yes, sir.
And that will be February twentieth, board work session at nine AM, and that's on a Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will we have it for breakfast?
I don't think that'll discourage you making a comment.
Be taking orders for two of these. We'll find something.
Next board meeting, we'll have a contract on there for Bill Limp.
It'll probably be all yes vote, I think. Okay. Let's go down to the comments and, uh, concerns section. Board members, anybody have anything?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkerson.
As you're aware, Mr. Priestley. Mr. Priestley helped me out on this one Friday. Friday afternoon, I received an email from Donna Harvey from the Engineering Division of the State Division of Highways. We now have the audit for midway traffic scheduled for in the morning at seven o'clock in the library in Midway. So you're all welcome to come if you want to. Uh, this is weather permitting, according to Harvey, so I hope it's a beautiful day tomorrow to get on with this.
I don't think there's any bad weather.
It's supposed to be as partly cloudy today. And, uh, Mr. O'Donoghue, I hope can be there. I know if you can't, we'd appreciate it. It would probably help quite a bit. That's all I have.
If not, I can make me contacting you for what happened.
That's fine. Of course. Of course. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Anybody else have anything?
I do.
Mr. Baker.
Well, I'd like to invite the people in the hallway back in, the ones that are remaining to make my comments. That's okay.
I guess it's okay. I, since I don't know what you would say, I...
No, no one knows what I would say except me. Uh, Mr. O'Donoghue remained, whereas everyone else who was here to videotape the presentation, et cetera, has left and all the other people that participated. While we can't particularly address anything, we can make general comments. Um, and, and my general comment is, to the extent there are complaints with an administrator at a local school or complaints that are not addressed, the proper procedure is to notify the superintendent's office and seek a meeting with them. If that doesn't resolve the conflict, then get on the agenda and please come speak to the board. With that said, that's the proper method for handling issues. Every board member sitting here has social media accounts, my cell phone number's online. And if there are people that have complaints of this nature that are not being addressed, that have either gone through the superintendent's office or haven't, and just want to talk about them, reach out. We, we as board members, and probably the administration is not aware of a lot, are not aware of a lot of these individual incidents unless they come through the proper channels to us. So, you know, there are procedures for handling these things. Follow them if you don't want to follow them. Reach out to any of us board members and we'll help you through the process. Those are my comments.
Okay. And I agree with, I think what we heard there, some apparently have gone through various steps and others may not have.
I didn't hear anyone say they'd gone through the superintendent's office.
Well, if only.
But that, that was addressed. Complaint was addressed, right? And that's my point is...
But you're right, that's the proper procedure. And that's also just as a footnote here, some of these, uh, statements that were made today, we are aware of. And some things have been addressed by us, but you know, it's, these are student confidential matters and, uh, you know, they're often, although they aren't as close, we can't do that. So sometimes things happen that nobody's aware of. But anyway...
But I just hate that the people that came in here and took the time to talk to us didn't get to hear those things that we just said because they may not be aware of the proper procedure. And I'm not sure how many will watch Mr. O'Donoghue's feed or read any write-up he may have on this.
I have confidence that many will do that.
So anyway, I wish I was speaking to them. I wish some of them stuck around, but I understand why with the excitement of our agenda, they were too early to leave a little early. But anyway, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay. Any other board members? Mr. Minkett, you didn't have anything on this, you told me to save this, I guess we will.
Actually, I do.
Mr. Minkett.
Actually, a couple of items. Uh, one, I gave you a, an email handout from Dave Ferguson that I received regarding the upcoming CEFP meetings. Last week, I informed the board that the next scheduled meeting is February the third. It's at six PM here at the central office. Since last week's meeting, I've followed up with Mr. Ferguson. And, uh, he's given me two additional dates. I'd love to share with you.
February third.
So we have, now have February third, February thirteenth, and February twenty-seventh as meeting dates to, to move into. At the bottom of the first page of the email I've got, I've got your company, what is considered to be the second phase of this process.
Let me clarify that. So these three meetings you alluded to all will lead up to Phase Two.
So these, these next three meetings will all take in what we're going to be doing at Phase Two of the process. So just want to clarify. So we're about to move into Phase Two with the February third meeting. And then he spells out, uh, Mr. Ferguson spells out what that involves. That's reviewing the faculty, reviewing the facility surveys and cost to bring the facilities that we currently have up the code. Reviewing the educational plan, which is what we developed during the first phase of the process. Translating the educational needs into facility needs. And then he gave, uh, he sent Greg and I, Greg Dawson and I, these forms that eventually are going to be on this website as a school meeting. But I'll leave this morning, this, this form is still not on that one. That's...
And who's to put that on?
That's school dude, uh, except Mr. Ferguson.
So he does that.
So, um, in addition to these three meetings, I'm anticipating that there will also be community meetings. And I, and as soon as I'm able to nail down the dates and locations for those meetings, I'm going to all share those with you. But as of right now, it looks like the dates that he's provided are just dates to work on Phase Two of this process.
Let me get clarified through, Mr. James. By the time you get to the community meeting phase, is there a proposed, a tender plan then, or is it still seeking input to develop a plan?
It'd be a draft document, if I understand, of facility meetings or prioritizing list that would be shared with the faculty for feedback. So, you know...
It could be revised.
Could be, yeah, could be revised as a result of those meetings.
Okay.
So the goal is still, when I talk to Mr. Ferguson the other day, is to try to have all this wrapped up here at the county level by the first of April. That's going to be, you know, it's going to be some heavy lifting between now and then to get all that in place. I know when I go back and look at policy, it says that I actually have it until July, June the thirtieth, for local board approval, state board approval, and the student and the community approval.
But if all three of those have to approve, then obviously the board, local board approvals will have to, have to be, uh, June the thirtieth or whatever it is. But you'll keep a surprise with those. But right now, now these three dates that you gave, are those all to be held here at the board office?
Yes, I, Mr. Ferguson, those three meetings have to take place. The change is on. There's some time on that. They're six PM, all six PM.
Yeah. Okay, at least, Mr. Ferguson, that's... So we are on...
Um, I wanted to share with you the dates for our, for our student celebration, where we'll recognize our midfield day winners, I guess writers winners, spelling bee, Mark Luther King poster contest, there may be some other winners out there. How was that, Currie?
We typically recognize Skills USA.
Skills.
Those, the high school.
So, um, in, in keeping with the consistency in the schedule, when you're this year, this first celebration will be March the seventeenth. If it's up, I'm sharing this, we can make sure it's up. March seventeenth at five PM. Now, that's the night of a regularly scheduled board meeting. So we would do it an hour before that board meeting, just as we've done in the past, we'll use this, this room. And then we'll have a reception afterwards. So I just wanted to get on the calendar now, make sure it's not only an issue because we can find all of that. Okay. And lastly, I'm going to stick to my script, so hopefully don't become a motion.
Just, just follow the lead right now.
I am officially announcing my retirement today. After much thought and prayer, I've just made the decision to retire at the end of the school year, effective June thirtieth. I'm making the announcement now, so the board will have ample time to search and hire a new superintendent. School system's been a second home to me and I've had the privilege of working with wonderful, many, many wonderful people over the past thirty years. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board members for your leadership, your support, and most importantly, the trust you give me, you're showing me. As I've served as superintendent, this has truly been a humbling experience for me. At this point in my life, I just, I want to be able to spend more time with my family. I've shared with you that my children are grown and married now, they've moved out of state. I want to be able, my wife and I would like to be able to do some traveling and visit our children. I don't, I don't know that they will be looking forward to seeing that much more. That's the plan. And I, and as I've shared with you, I've got an older handicap brother, he's a buddy. He's had some health issues, a leg, and mom's his caretaker. And I want to be able to help her as, as she increasingly needs help taking care of it. Thank you so much for having the opportunity. Sorry to miss the pass. I can never tell you how much it's meant to me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I'm a very good, I'm going to review your contract, make sure and see if there isn't some way to keep you in for another few years, despite your desire to leave.
There's going to be a clause in there somewhere.
Got to be some.
I appreciate the fact that Mr. Minkett did, uh, tell us this last week, because otherwise the shock would probably be too much for us. But, uh, he, and he's kept that very close to his best. But he did, uh, as he usually is, was very professional and advised us, gave us a little heads up on it. Um, but I think our sentiments are all the same. We're sorry to see you go. We understand. I've seen, I was trying to count the number of secret tenants I've involved. Mr. Minkett, in my opinion, is the best superintendent ever.
I agree.
Well, if I say that, Steve's going to get mad.
I would.
So I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Well, I'm not convinced. I need another two years to convince me of that.
Jeff has shown, you know, the ultimate professionalism. You know, we were seeking a certain type of person. He took this job, he's fulfilled all that. We wanted a person to communicate with us, tell us what's going on. Uh, he, he's done an exceptional job at that. Uh, you know, everything we've asked of him, he was able to do. And he's done it in a very professional way with all facets, you know, the community, the staff, our teachers and support personnel, everybody. Um, you know, I'm sure some people at times may, may not like, may not have liked exactly what he said, but he told them in a way that was very professional and they understood it and wasn't in some harsh way, way to say it. Anyway, uh, he's done a great job. We're sorry to see him go, but we understand why. Uh, you know, we all have, uh, personal lives and, and, uh, you know, they should be foremost for someone. And we all understand that, and they are. That doesn't make it any better, as far as us. But now we're going to be facing the task of, of finding a replacement effective July the first. And, uh, the board has not discussed this yet. What we will do, we'll try to come up with some game plan here as far as the schedule. Ideally, uh, we would, you know, we'll obviously get a little post position and, and we have a, we'll have to discuss how long we think that needs to go. But, uh, you know, but we have to hire somebody by June the first. Uh, I don't think we're going to prolong it that far. We have to try to do something in enough time that will give us a little leeway in case, uh, maybe we have a pool of applicants and we, we want to seek some more applicants. So I think we have to give ourselves enough time to be able to do that. So the board will be doing that due course. And, uh, we'll find somebody, continue the tradition, Mr. Minkett, to start it here. So we'll be doing that later. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Minkett?
Finally, a legal update. I'd like to request an executive session by the board, information regarding personnel affairs.
Personnel, at one forty-eight PM, Mr. Minkett wants a personnel executive session. Mr. Baker? Mr. Smith seconded that? All yes? Yeah.